That is also showing on the screen right now for those of you that wish to copy it down. The second hearing, Tony and Nicole Hubbard, docket number ZBA-21-00013. This is a C variance in which the applicant is requesting to put up a pool in the backyard at 427 West Point Avenue in Somerset, block 348, lot 32, and this is in zone R15. This matter will also be carried to July 15, 2021 with a notice in the newspaper needed. Both of these matters will be heard at 7:30 PM on July 15. For those wishing to participate in this hearing via virtual WebEx meeting, the event address for attendees will be posted on the Township's website at https://www.franklintpnj.org/home components/calender/events/17630/2193. For those wishing to listen via telephone, the call-in number is 1408-418-9388 and the access code is 129-895-7251. For those of you that were unable to get that information, you may feel free to call me at 732-873-2500 and my extension is 6215 and I will help you get to that information. We have a third matter that is going to be carried. Allow me a couple seconds to bring up what that one is. I apologize, I don't see the WebEx link up there, but please be over to you.
If not so, don't worry about it, just read the link.
Okay. This hearing is Saha Rose Incorporated, docket number ZBA20-00026. This is a D variance in which the applicant is applying to park 15 school buses on the property at 2 JFK Boulevard, Somerset. The block is 386.17, the lot is 138, and it's in zone GB. This matter is being carried to August 5, 7:30 PM. No further notification is needed. For those wishing to participate in the hearing via virtual WebEx meeting, the event address for attendees will be posted on the Township's website at https://www.franklintpnj.org/home components/calender/events/17629/2193. For those wishing to listen via telephone, the call-in number is 1408-418-9388 and the access code is 173-043-6044. And those of you that wish to contact me concerning this matter, Saha Rose, you can reach me at 732-873-2500 and my extension is 6215. Mr. Thomas, allowing me to... platform is all yours. Yes, sir. Cheryl Bethia. Bruce McCracken. Joel Reese. Alan Rich. Gary Rosenfeld. Both Mr. Robert Shepherd and Mr. Richard Prokanic both asked to be excused from this evening's meeting. Kunal Lakir. Basim Verdas. And Chairman Thomas.
That's the regular meeting, 2021.
Who was the first, I'm sorry?
Gary.
Gary, okay. Cheryl Bethia.
Yes.
Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Alan Rich. Gary Rosenfeld.
Yes.
Basim Verdas. And Chairman Thomas.
To get into the regular meeting in general. That's the meeting. It's going to be leaving. Thank you for your... Yes, I agree.
Thank you all for your attention.
Good luck, thank you.
Definitely appreciate it. You're going with the like in here.
My first comment I would make is our board asserting one of the matters carried. Saha Rose property has a... We have any... So be present since the owner... Maybe some issues that need to be addressed in that hearing. Something that's possible or... Tangent and...
Can't hear you.
Agree with you, Bob.
Okay.
I don't believe you are off on a tangent with no hope, but the applicant... Obviously, the applicant can be contract purchaser or tenant with a property owner, so in this instance, it's a tenant, an existing tenant of the property. I don't believe that there's any requirement for... To appear, obviously, I think we can request that the board can request that the owner... At, you know, next hearing. I'm gonna take a look, Mr. Chairman, you know, while we're going through the meeting, take a look at the cox trees just to get a... For you, but I'm not sure that the board has the authority to require the owner to appear because the owner is not the applicant. Obviously consent to the application, but I don't believe they can be required to appear, but I'm gonna double check that just to make sure. Is it differently since... Us that... Probably potentially resolvable. Right that only the owner... Stantial hearing. At least I thought I would ask. Hey, Mr. Chairman, if I can follow up with the applicant's attorney, discuss that request in more detail and see if we can prevail, if both of us can prevail upon the honor to request it. Thank you. Tonight's hearing. By the Bagwell Institute, ZBA1900. Three conditional use variance, site plan. The applicant asking to construct a 21,000 square foot place of worship. 6.03. See if we can bring on... Supplants, I think. Out to... Actors. This is...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Peter Lanfret appearing on behalf of the applicant, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was having some computer issues, so hopefully they've been resolved and we can move on smoothly. You are correct, at the last meeting, I presented what was going to be my last witness, subject to the right to recall witnesses after the objectors presented their witnesses. I was advised that the objectors were going to provide traffic testimony this evening. They did provide... Put into myself a copy of a traffic letter regarding this application, and I also understand that they may be planning testimony this evening. At this point, I guess I could sit back and listen and have you have the attorney of the objectors present their witnesses.
Hey, are those attorneys... Started. I brought them in. I perceive it as you do.
We represent the OEX who resides at 646 South... This evening, for purposes to clarify, we have traffic only for this evening. Having our environmental expert and our planner available at a subsequent meeting. I'll agree on going forward. Any other housekeeping items that I can proceed?
Who's gonna be presenting or test...
Sure, Mark, it's Louis Lugo. Adam Schwartz consulting.
I brought him in, he should be in in a minute.
Okay.
Are you waiting? Thank you. I see, sure. Raise your right hand, you swear that the testimonial you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and... Yes, I do. If you could just spell your name for the record. Sure. It's Louis Lugo, it's L-U-G-L-I-O. Mr. Eric, I... You... So, Lugo, prepare a traffic letter. I know it's been submitted to the board, but we should probably enter it. Evidence, I don't know, Christine, I don't know if you mark objectors exhibits differently. So, I'm not sure what you're saying.
No, I don't... Usually you just tell them what number, like exhibit A, B, 1, 2, 3, that's all.
How many did it with stuff, the letter already under as a projector? I've seen it. This would be the first one to your college, Christine, Mark, I think, for the objectors.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. This is on the record, it's 10th of November, 4th of June, 2021.
And you just, what's the title of the report and just verify, Mr. Lugo?
Certainly, before we get into that, Mr. Eric, I just want to have him provide the wonderful benefit of his qualifications and experience.
Sure. I am, I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have a master's in transportation planning, also from NJIT. I hold a PE license in the state of New Jersey and a few other states. I have served as an expert witness for NJDOT, Bergen County, Essex County, and a number of municipalities in New Jersey, and I have also served as an expert witness with respect to applications as well. I have been practicing traffic and transportation planning for the past 32 years.
And your license is still in good standing?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Eric, at this point, I'd like to call if I'm okay with the board.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Very much. So, Mr. Eric, you could add any report that was submitted to the board. Can you just... Title?
Sure, that is Traffic Impact Study and Parking Review of the Dollar Bagwell Institute.
Thank you. I need some... Back to you soon, I have to move on.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm gonna have you in summary form review your report.
Sure. So, again, this is 01, the Traffic Impact Study and Parking Review. Start off with existing conditions, and I know the board is familiar and has heard about the existing conditions on South Middle Bush Road. It basically is a very narrow roadway with one lane in each direction and no shoulders. The travel lanes are basically the minimum of a travel lane of 12 feet in width, and then I continue in the next paragraph talking about traffic volumes on South Middle Bush Road, and I basically utilize the data in the Dolan Dean Traffic Impact Study, really to look at what happens during the course of a weekday. And one of the attachments that I have, I think it's attachments A, is a graphic representation of that traffic volume data, and basically what that shows is a very, a very standard traffic volume build up in the AM peak hour, and it kind of dips down in the midday and then it's back up in the PM peak hour. Part of just what I'd also like to advise the board on is that as a result, in the morning and in the afternoon peaks, the peak hour actually doesn't spike, it kind of plateaus, and that's one indication that the roadway at some point in the AM and PM reaches or is operating at its analytical capacity during the peak hours, which basically means that the roadway capacity is met, and therefore the peak hour in the morning is really longer than an hour, and we call it peak hour spreading because it happens for more than a one-hour period in time. So with that, the same phenomenon occurs during the PM peak hour, and that peak hour is really a peak period anywhere from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Do you hear feedback on your side or is it just on my side?
No, I definitely hear it, I was thinking the same thing.
Sure. Not sure why. Can you hear me now? I hear you fine.
Yeah, I don't hear the feedback.
Is that better?
I personally, I still hear the feedback.
I hear just...
Yeah.
I just still hear you even with the feedback. Sorry about that, I'm gonna have to make... I can hang, keep going. Okay. So, what happens in the morning is there's about 1,000 vehicles per hour, 6:00 AM, and then that basically continues during the day in the PM peak hour, and it's also probably about the same in terms of about 1,500 to 1,800 vehicles. The point of all of that is basically to, and something that the board already knows that there are time periods during the day where there's a lot of traffic congestion along in South Middle Bush Road, and there are also times of the day where there's not much traffic and sometimes vehicles aren't getting as high rate of speed. As far as trip generation, bottom of the first page of 01, in the Dolan Dean Report, the client information that was provided to Dolan Dean is the basis of their study, looking at 150 to 175 people that may visit the site between 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM for Friday evening type service or activity. Continuing on page two, they talked about twice a year on the Saturday and Sunday, there would be perhaps 225 to 250 people visiting the site. The main thing I pulled out of that was that 50 vehicles could possibly enter the site during one hour or leave in one hour. So, I actually looked at various ways to generate traffic or to come up with trip generation. Again, in the Dolan Dean Report, they relied upon client information of how many people would be at the site, and then utilized three people per vehicle to really come up with 50 vehicles or even 60 vehicles, I think, utilized in their study and analysis. On that page two, I looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it's a Trip Generation Manual, which is a publication that is utilized throughout the US.
Have you been muted?
And many DOTs utilize that to come up with the number of average trips that would be generated. Now, I also looked at various lanias that correspond to a house of worship, so in this last edition of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, they went from just house of worship type data into very specific categories, and so you could see that there's a lanias for a mosque, a lanias for a church, a synagogue, and so I posted all three of them to give the board an idea of what the trips would be, each one of those other houses of worship, understanding that they are different, and compared to this one would be a little different as well, but looking at a Friday AM peak hour of 200, and a Friday PM of 401, for a church, obviously on a Sunday would be 242, and for synagogue was 171, and all of which are high numbers compared to what this house of worship from the client and Dolan Dean Report would generate in terms of traffic volume. So, it could anywhere be anywhere from three to six and a half times higher than what's been estimated and analyzed in the Traffic Impact Study from Dolan Dean. The point that I wanted to make here was that the board should request that the applicant prepare revised intersection analysis of the driveway based on 100 vehicles entering and exiting the site, and maybe another one to do sensitivity analysis of up to 150 vehicles, really to fully understand what the traffic impacts along South Middle Bush Road would be.
Um, please, just a moment, a second. Christine, there's a Q and A comment from one of the board members, I believe that they did not receive the traffic report. I just want to make sure the board did receive that.
For myself, I received that it was maybe for the last meeting.
Yeah, I did not... I was not aware. Documentation.
You had had a traffic report or something that you sent to Frank Reagan, correct?
I sent to you as well.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I sent to you as well, Martina submitted it.
Right, and there was a question on it, I didn't know to send it out, I didn't know the question was ever answered, I never saw anything. You had said, is it okay to send it, right, or no? Is that the one you're speaking on?
Um, yeah, I believe so, but I can have Martina speak to it, she forwarded it over.
I can go right to my office now and send it over to the board members if that will help you.
I just think it'll be easier if I follow along.
All right, I can go do that, no problem.
Just for the record, I did email out Christine with a request that she distribute out to the board, and the date of that email and the request was June 15.
Just for the record, I'm looking at the email, it was sent by Christine to the board members on the 16th of June. I know it was sent out because frankly, I was very disappointed in getting a copy of that right before previous meeting. I thought that was not very, I mean, was not very good because there wasn't very much time. I know it was sent out.
Okay, I understand. Fortunately, there was some little head of issue, you know, a personal matter that he had to attend to, which was why I have to go.
Okay, what I'll do now is I'm gonna send it right now again, just so whoever doesn't have it has it to look at, so just give me a moment, you all can keep talking, I'm just gonna go and send it out, okay? I'll resend it out, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You want to keep it on?
I'm getting here.
Yeah.
I turned my camera.
So, I'll just reiterate that last part, which was, the board should request the applicant prepare revised intersection analysis based on 100 vehicles entering and exiting the site, and then maybe a sensitivity analysis using 150 vehicles to fully understand the traffic impacts along South Middle Bush Road. It definitely would change the analysis. As far as access to and from the site, based on the Traffic Impact Study, the applicant's Traffic Impact Study, proposed driveway, specifically the southbound left turn into the site, suggested that it would operate at an acceptable level service. However, I think part of the analysis does not take into account congestion along South Middle Bush Road. The lack of gaps in traffic to complete a left turn maneuver in the southbound direction definitely has an effect on the analysis, and the analysis again is only based on 25 vehicles making that left turn, southbound left turn into the site. Qualitative review of this, these factors, if they were incorporated into the analysis, along with perhaps 100 vehicles making a left turn into the site, the intersection... But now it's dealing level service, and I attached, attached C as detailed capacity analysis or intersection analyses.
No.
Based again on a hundred vehicles making a turn into the site. Also, I think it was both AM and PM or in now and now back. I think I may have used the terms arriving and departing to be consistent. Uh, in similar fashion, vehicles exiting the site would also have a difficult time finding gaps in traffic of leaving the proposed site from a one-lane exit roadway onto South Middle Bush Road, depending on which direction to be traveling to. Addition, Saada traffic impact study that Dolan Dean also prepared, and I listened to that testimony, that should have been taken into account either in this study or in the other study. Neither one of them referenced the other, knowing that it was a potential development approximately thirteen hundred and fifty feet away along South Middle Bush Road. And again, the intersections that are associated with that and the traffic that would be associated with that, they also have some effect on this proposed driveway as well.
Was that it?
Traffic impact study does not indicate how long of queue the vehicles would be extending into the site or vehicles that are leaving the site. And the last point that I had there was about lighting of the proposed site driveway, which must also be addressed in the safety consideration standpoint. In addition, uh, the other point that I wanted to make was that south, again, as I started South Middle Bush Road, this is very narrow roadway, there really is no room if the southbound vehicle is stopped waiting for a gap in northbound traffic to complete a left turn maneuver into the site. Uh, all of the vehicles behind it in the southbound direction would have to wait. There's not enough room. There's no shortage for another vehicle to get around, uh, even from emergency, uh, vehicle standpoint, that also could be an issue. On-site circulation and safety, um, vehicles that are exiting the proposed one-lane driveway, I think that's really the main point that I had on that. Last page, potential traffic impacts should be considered along South Middle Bush Road, including additional traffic congestion, safety issues with respect to the driveway intersection, southbound left turn into the site causing additional queuing and additional congestion along South Middle Bush Road, potentially compounding traffic congestion of the proposed development projects along the roadway. The cumulative traffic conflicts and congestion that would be generated. The board should require input and really approval from the counties before any approval to better understand that the county will require a widening of South Middle Bush Road to provide for an exclusive left, southbound left turn into the site. South Middle Bush Road widened from this project to the proposed site Dada project. Or if the county will not permit any widening because of its scenic, uh, nature, scenic roadway nature, in which case the proposed site driveway could be a traffic and safety issue. Lastly, the parking requirement, uh, parking, the project should consider a calculation based on the square footage of the house of worship area, which would require four hundred and fifty-seven parking spaces and only a hundred and fifty-seven are provided. I also looked at the ITE Parking Generation Manual. Site would require from anywhere from three hundred and sixty-three parking spaces to four hundred and twenty parking spaces for a typical mosque based on square footage and not based on the number. So that information was also provided in attachment C. But this is the, the numbers that I just talked about, the three sixty-three to four hundred and twenty parking spaces are certainly more in line with the four hundred and fifty-seven spaces required by DRCO and certainly much more than the one hundred and fifty-seven spaces, uh, that are proposed. This would be a two hundred to three hundred, two hundred and six to three hundred space variance that's requested. So all of, all of this, uh, information that we have in, in the traffic impact study and parking review is really the summary of some of the traffic related issues with respect to parking onsite, offsite generation that, that in my review project.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of follow-up questions for you. The applicant's traffic engineer identified South Middle Bush Road as an urban arterial roadway. Would that be your assessment as well?
Yes.
Joel is asking, Jennifer, if you could please restate your question. You were breaking up and you couldn't hear you. Thank you.
Um, applicant's traffic engineer identified South Middle Bush Road as an urban arterial roadway. Would that be your assessment as well?
Yes.
And could you define for the board what an urban arterial roadway is?
An urban arterial roadway is basically a roadway that is connecting, it, it's not a local roadway. It's connecting more destinations. It could also be, uh, a roadway that's connecting, uh, different municipalities. So it's a significant roadway. It's urban in, in nature, basically based on its, its proximity, but also land uses that could be along the. So it's not a local roadway. It's not, uh, it's not a highway or a freeway. It's something that's in between.
Um.
And handles a significant number of vehicles.
Um, and would you agree that you're not just dealing with cars and vehicles along the roadway, but tractor trailers, trucks, box trucks and so forth?
Right. There's a different, a, a full mix of traffic that would be, that, that is along South Middle Bush Road, including passenger vehicles, uh, buses, school buses, trucks. Yes.
Um, applicant's traffic engineer noted that during peak tra, peak traffic pre-COVID, the traffic was considered heavy, um, as it is presently. Um, with the impact, what would the, in your opinion, be of the impact with this proposal as well as the other pending house of worship application?
Well, right now during certain times of the day and multiple hours of the day on a weekday, uh, there is traffic congestion and especially on, on the Saturday where that traffic congestion is pretty steady during the day. Um, any, any significant volume increase without any type of widening at certain locations where you would have major driveways would place additional burden on South Middle Bush Road to process traffic. And basically one of two things could happen. One is, uh, obviously it would be more queuing and more congestion for longer periods during the day. Or people traveling South Middle Bush Road would, would have to find alternate ways to get to where, where they're going.
Yeah, as mentioned by the applicant's traffic engineer, roughly a hundred cars, um, would probably yield the level of service F. Um, do you agree with that assessment? And what does a level of service F mean traffic-wise along that roadway?
So level service F, uh, levels of service range from A as an apple down to F like a report card. And so an acceptable level service is level service E, which is right before F. Level service F is congestion. If you were at a signalized intersection, uh, you may not get through that signal on one single cycle. You'll have to wait just to give the board an understanding of, of what that, what level service F is. Uh, so there's considerable amount of delay and congestion associated with it. Um, the traffic impact study, though, it was prepared, uh, only utilized twenty-five vehicles making the southbound left turn. And I think it, and although I, I do agree, or can agree, that vehicles would enter over the course of, of hours, uh, from a traffic standpoint, you look at, uh, what would happen on an average or being conservative, what could happen, uh, if many people came at the same time. And so looking at this, um, and looking at the possibility of four hundred and fifty-eight, I believe, people that could occupy the building, believe that a hundred vehicles making that left turn or even fifty vehicles making that southbound left turn, uh, would have a failing level service at the driveway that would require, um, some type of improvement to the intersection.
Thank you very much. I am looking further. I'm not sure if Martina has some follow-up questions.
Thank you. For the record, Martia Bailey on behalf of John and Ray Snyder. Um, good evening. And good night to the board. Um, just one follow-up question. Um, the applicant provided testimony, um, by Ms. Dolan that the schedules and the traffic effects of the two temples, the Dada Bhagwai and the Sai Dada temples did not conflict. That your understanding as well, or is there actually some overlap in the schedules that you're aware of?
I believe there is. I believe there is some overlap in the proposed schedule, especially on a, on a Friday, uh, and even possibly on a Saturday. There, there, there are some overlaps and, and I would follow that up with two things. One, um, I would assume that both project sites began on the same roadway. Analysis of sensitivity analysis of if both of them would operate at the same time would be prudent for the board to understand i- if that could happen. Um, and certainly the other is if one of the two, assuming they were both constructed, if either one of the two, uh, became a different type of house of worship that was similar to the other, then they would both have exactly the same type of schedule. So again, just from a sensitivity and being conservative, I would make the assumption that, um, they would operate at the same time. And so what is that analysis and provide that to the board?
I have nothing to.
Hey, I have a couple of questions as long as you two are finished. In your, in your analysis, I find it interesting that rightfully, the possibility of another institutional, right, and that impact might be. Patient were considering. Nowhere is there any mention how the interplay between the traffic generated by the farm gently next door facility might have on it. They make the same left and right turns, have a very high volume of traffic. Uh, and it seems to work. What he mentions, anything about, it works. Also have an issue with, uh, the board to us to consider the testimony applicant. It seems to me that you have gone so overboard being conservative projections, it disregarded the testimony that was given by the applicant. I didn't hear, I could be mistaken, anywhere use of this facility and testimony given by the applicant, ever going to be a hundred and fifty cars an hour turning into this driveway. Why are we basing our projections on something that's not, not to happen? We have to give our faith in some respects to the truthfulness and the accuracy of the testimony that's being given by the applicant regarding the use of the facility. Also, I am well aware of traveling that highway, street, whatever you want to call it, every day of the week, probably. Every, every weekday, as you mentioned, it has its high peaks and low peaks. Its use is primarily a weekend use. And it's also not necessarily coinciding, its use is not coinciding with, uh, the hours of traffic that's on South Middle. That virtually any time of the day. I would have appreciated the waiting two weeks to get clarification of this testimony that would be a little more relevant to the facts that were given in the. Anyone else have any questions, please? I guess Mr. Land, can you get your opportunity?
This is just me and Martia here real quick. If I could, I, I'd like to address your concern in the form of a question. Because I, because I have been questioned. We, we've had an extensive amount of testimony. I'll be looking at two meetings with a testimony describing the, the use that they're actually proposing and the operation, the occupancy at all different times of the day and of year. In terms of traffic and parking. And this report seems to disregard all of that and takes generic information, generic information out of the ITE. So my question then to the traffic engineers, why did you do that? You explained to the board why. Don't base on what the board heard about this application, but instead took generic information out of ITE in terms of traffic generation and parking.
Uh, interestingly because the ITE is based on hundreds, if not thousands of studies of different types of houses of worship. And a set of projects of this size of over twenty thousand square feet that could handle four hundred and fifty people inside the building, I find it very difficult to believe that only fifty vehicles would actually access the site during a peak hour. And if the applicant's traffic engineer just relied on data that the, that the client or the applicant gave, uh, I, I think that is insufficient.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna refer you to your, your exhibit. Land Use Mosque, five sixty-two. Um, it's based on, how many, how many uses was the IT number based on? Hundreds of.
It all, it all depends on which land use and if you're looking at it from the generator or from, uh, the peak hour of the adjacent street traffic. So it all depends.
Okay, but the numbers that you used. What number did you use to generate your? What factor, I should say, did you use to generate your figures?
Uh, we used all of those. Just AM, AM, the generator, right? The AM, the, the one that you talked about just now, the AM, uh, Friday, two oh eight, that utilized the average rate. Because, you know, there's not a, there's not a lot of data for that particular timeframe.
There was, there was on seven, seven mosques.
Yeah.
With a caution of small mosques, correct?
Same thing with the Friday PM peak hour.
Okay. And then how many were you guys, was there another? Is there another number that you used? Okay, so mosque, then the synagogue.
Right. Church is based on, uh, eighteen studies that were done. Synagogue, I think it was just on. Synagogue, I think it was just on one study, for the synagogue. Okay, and then in the parking, how many studies was that based on? How many mosques? I think that's four studies that that was based on, for mosque and parking. And is there a reason why you gave, and that gave a range? Range, okay. Is there a reason why you used church and synagogues? Uh, they're all, all three of them are house of worship. In previous editions, it was just one house of worship.
Yeah, but you used a synagogue for Sunday. A synagogue doesn't generate traffic on a Sunday. It generates traffic on Friday night and Saturday.
Yeah, there was no, there was no data for that.
Well, they don't, don't present it then.
Just presented all the information that was available. Again, I go back to, of four hundred and fifty people, I just, I would have just found it very difficult to utilize only fifty vehicles coming in during one of the peak hours. Fifty vehicles, I mean, that's a very low number. If I were going to present to the board what could be an average condition, I would have certainly used something that's a little bit higher than that.
But this is a specific facility, specific uses, and that's what's, what we're using is not what the testimony was.
I, I understand that, Mr. Chairman, but the, the information that's presented in the traffic impact study is not based on other sites.
Well, good. What good does it do us now? You're, we were looking for information pertaining to this site. I can get your ITE manual and read the pages myself. I don't need you here speculate on what the traffic is gonna be, and make it fit the agenda that you're trying to, to process. We have a board, as a board, have to consider what the sworn testimony is. I would think your traffic report would be, first of all, considering what the sworn testimony says. Then if you want to add your little addendums from the ITE, as an example of what maybe other people, other places, you know, might generate, fine. That's not what this specific facility was to do. Now, I find this borderline waste of time.
Okay, if, if, if the board, if the board, if, if you and the board believes that only fifty cars would come in during a peak hour, then that's great.
But you're also using time of day. You're not even having services.
Mr. Chairman, and, Mr. Chairman and the board, if, if you and the board believe that only fifty vehicles would come in through this site, at any time during that ti- whole time period, then that's what you have to go on.
What do we need traffic experts for?
Maybe you're right, and hopefully, you are right, and there won't be any issues along South Middlebush Road. But at four hundred and fifty people, I think there's going to be a little bit more than fifty vehicles coming in.
According to their, according to the sworn, they don't have four hundred and fifty members. And why is the building twenty-one thousand square feet? Did you hear the rest of the hearing? They did give testimony on how it is, yeah, if it doesn't fit the traffic map. I don't want to monopolize this, I apologize. Board members have other questions, please ask them. Otherwise, we'll move on. Mr. LaFord, let him cross-examine.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and frankly, you beat me to the punch on many of the questions that I was going to ask this witness. Hopefully, I won't take much time, but I do have to hit on a few points. First of all, who retained you?
Jennifer Martina, and their clients retained me.
So, you were retained by both property owners?
That's correct.
Okay. And you indicated, in your testimony, that you heard the testimony of some of the witnesses. Did you hear the testimony of all of the witnesses, or did you hear just some of the eight hearings that took place?
I think I probably witnessed at least four, the last four hearings.
Okay, which included the applicant's testimony concerning operations, and also the testimony of Ms. Dolan?
That's correct.
Okay. And in the applicant's testimony concerning the intended use of the facility, he indicated that the facility would primarily be used on Saturdays and Sundays, except for two Fridays a year when there were high holidays, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And yet, in your report, you talk about the fact that we were gonna be there from six to ten PM after evening rush hour on Fridays, implying every Friday. Was that a typographical mistake, or were you attempting to mislead the board about us being there every Friday?
I don't think I said every Friday.
On Fridays. Look at the last line of the first page of your report. So, was that, was that a type of?
It should be eight, eight, eight Friday.
So, that was in our, in your report. Now, you also indicated that you visited the site, correct?
Yes.
When did you visit the site?
I visited the site multiple occasions, most of it was beginning, probably beginning of February, and towards the end of last year.
What days of the week did you visit the site?
It was weekdays.
So, you never visited the site on a Saturday or a Sunday when the facility would be operating if it were to be approved, correct?
Did not visit it on a Saturday or a Sunday, no.
And even clearly from your report, the, the traffic patterns on South Middlebush Road are significantly different, and the volumes are significantly different Mondays through Fridays than they are on Saturday and Sunday. Isn't that correct?
Yep.
Okay. And when, listen to the testimony of Mr. Patel, he indicated that on the average Saturday and Sunday, he, they would have anywhere between seventy-five and maybe once a month, a hundred and forty people, correct? Do you recall that?
I do.
Okay. And he talked about the high holy days, and on those days, he said they may have up to two hundred and fifty people. Do you recall that?
Yeah.
And why would you base any of your report on four hundred and fifty-six people?
That's the occupancy of the building.
That, based on what?
Based on the architectural plan. It says four hundred and fifty-eight people, and that's how you also came up with dividing by three, the number of vehicles, right? I mean, that, that's the occupancy of the building.
Isn't that based on the code for the purpose of considering the number of parking spaces, not necessarily the occupancy? It says one person for every fifteen square feet of the building? Isn't that what the ordinance says?
The occupancy on the plan, talks about four hundred and fifty-eight people.
Based on the township's ordinance, and this is for zoning, not for building occupancy, for zoning based on square footage of the building, correct?
That's how many people could be there, yes.
That's how many people could be there? Did you hear the testimony of Mr. Artman, that this place is serviced by a septic system, and that it's limited to no more than two thousand gallons per day, and that four hundred and fifty-six people could not occupy that building? Now, I think Mr. Thomas sort of hit on this, but in your report, again, on the first page, you spent a, spent a full paragraph talking about the AM and PM peak hours on South Middlebush Road, Monday through Friday, correct?
Yes.
And is the temple open on Mondays through Fridays during the AM and PM peak hours?
No.
So, what relevance does that paragraph have to this application?
Gives a broader idea of what the traffic volumes are, Monday through Friday, from early in the morning till late in the afternoon.
Now, you further go on to, to compare this facility to a mosque, a church, excuse me, and a synagogue, correct?
Yes.
And all of those religious organizations have fixed services, correct?
I believe so.
So, that everybody comes at the same time and everybody leaves at the same time? Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And you heard the testimony of?
Generally, yes. Maybe not leaving at the same time, but certainly coming at the same time, for the same time period.
Okay. And you heard the testimony of my client, that indicated that they would have during Saturdays, a hundred attendees, from the hours of eleven AM to eight PM, spread out over the course of a day. Is that correct?
I did hear that, yes.
Okay. And therefore, that is a significantly different operation than the mosque, the church, and the synagogue, is it not?
It is.
Okay. And also would not create the issues that you indicated, as far as the number of people making a left turn into the site on a Saturday or Sunday, correct?
All depends on what time they come. I mean, they, they could, there could be a significant amount of people that come at one particular point during the day. I mean, I don't know. There's no other data that would suggest that that is the case.
Well, but, but my client did make the numbers up, and as a matter of fact, when he submitted the report, he indicated that it was based on his attendance at the current facility. So, these aren't projections, these are his actual numbers based on attendance. So, you would know that a hundred people come during the course of the day between eleven AM and eight PM, correct?
I, I, I mean, none of that information, I mean, I don't have that information. I don't know exactly what time all of the people attended, what time of the day, if multiple people came at the same time. That information was not presented. That information's not in the traffic impact study.
But, no, it, it is, and he, and he testified that, that basically, the seventy-five to a hundred people would come sporadically during the course of the day. Do you recall that testimony?
I recall that testimony, but I don't even know what sporadically means, in terms of the time that people would come. I don't deal with sporadically.
Now, you also had an issue with the driveway, and indicated that the driveway, which you were aware, I assumed that the existing driveway is gonna be relocated, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the new driveway was gonna be a two-lane driveway, was it not?
The new driveway is one lane in each direction.
Uh, didn't your report indicate that it's gonna be a one-lane driveway? At the bottom of page two.
Yeah, it should be one lane in each direction. It's, it, it's obviously a two-way driveway. And I would imagine that, I would imagine that the driveway, or the driveway itself, is probably between twelve and fifteen feet per lane.
Okay. So, that, that's another mistake in your report, correct?
No.
That's not a mistake?
It goes one lane driveway. Yeah, I, I guess, I guess so, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, you indicated that we needed to get input from the county concerning this. You understand and you're aware that this applicant has made application to Somerset County regarding this project, and submitted a report to Somerset County, correct?
I did hear that testimony, yes.
And also, you heard the testimony that with respect to the other temple, that they also, that applicant submitted a traffic report to Somerset County, and that Somerset County was going to review both of them in concert, correct?
I did hear that, too. Didn't, didn't see anything, anything back from the county, or any documentation on that, but I did hear the testimony, yes.
Okay. So, and obviously, even if this board were to approve this application, it would have to be contingent upon approval by Somerset County.
That is correct.
And Somerset County required improvements along South Middlebush Road, the applicant would have to make those improvements, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and perhaps go, come back to the board.
Perhaps. Now, you also indicated that, felt that there is inadequate parking on the site.
Yes, based on, again, the full occupancy of the building.
How about based on the testimony of the applicant as to the number of people that will actually be occupying the building?
I'm basing it on twenty-one thousand square feet, four hundred and fifty people that could be in the building.
And, and if I were to say to you that there were going to be two hundred and twenty-five people in that building because that's what the applicant testified to, in your opinion, is there adequate parking to satisfy the needs for those two hundred and twenty-five people?
For two hundred and twenty-five people? Yes, maybe.
So, you, a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces for two hundred and twenty-five people may be satisfactory?
I said, yes, maybe.
Maybe?
Yes, maybe.
Are you proposing that we should put more parking on the site?
Based on two hundred and twenty-five people? No.
Okay. Now, you indicated that a lot of the information contained in your report was based on the ITE manual, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And on page three of the ITE manual, paragraph one point four, says, "Many elements of the procedures presented in the trip generation handbook require the use of professional judgment to make a proper and informed selection or estimation," correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it indicates in there that you have to look at independent variables, peaking characteristics, building occupancy and usage. So, there are a lot of variables that you, as a traffic consultant, take into account when rendering an opinion as to what's appropriate and inappropriate, right?
Yes.
And, and in your opinion, referencing the mosque, church, and the synagogue is appropriate?
There, there is nothing that is similar to this use in the ITE, right? And, and it's, it's very hard for me to, to actually suggest that only fifty vehicles would be coming into this site during a peak hour. I just still, I still cannot get over that low number of vehicles that would be coming to the site. And so, that's why I looked at other houses of worship, based on twenty-one thousand square feet, and looked at what the trip generation would be for those other houses of worship.
So, you would not look at, and would not consider, what my client testified to was actually happy, happening at his current facility. You're indicating that that is not relevant because it's not referenced in the ITE manual, and that should be ignored, and we should be looking at churches and synagogues and mosques? Is that your testimony?
I would have been perfectly happy if there was an actual study done of vehicles coming in. coming in and out for the 12-hour period of time at the existing facility, that would have been satisfactory.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Okay, Mark, I believe we're ready to open to the public. Unless there are other board questions?
Well, yeah, just before we open to the comments, just to remind the public that if you have any questions for this witness, that you can either...
Mark, Mark.
You can either use the raise hand function in WebEx or you can press star three for calling in. Sorry, my audio was, had my thing up there.
Again, members of the public who want to ask questions of this expert, either do the raise hand function in WebEx or star three for calling in.
Any board member, 70 questions? I do see some member of the public with their hand raised, so I'm going to unmute Leah Convery.
Go ahead and provide your name, spell your last name and your address.
My name is Leah Convery, C-O-N as in Nancy, B as in Victor, E-R-Y, Franklinburg. I just wanted to ask if, if sir, Mr., I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Lucio, yes.
Lucio, generally, do people always tell the truth about the quantity of people going in and out of a facility?
That's an inappropriate question.
Yeah, I'm going to...
Question is to be on the testimony of witness, and that calls...
Okay.
To be that calls for him to make a conclusion, he has no basis for.
Wrong.
His area is traffic.
Okay, so there's a set amount of people that are usually going in and out of facilities, is that correct?
It definitely changes, right? It changes on a service basis, it changes month by month, so it's never a set amount, but in general, there's a range.
Okay, so the maximum occupancy of the facility, you're basing your estimations on the maximum capacity, is that correct?
Yes, I base it on the maximum capacity of 458.
Okay, so if the applicant has a membership drive and their membership goes up to maximum capacity, then what you've said today would be correct, right?
It would certainly be higher than what was presented in the traffic impact study, and I did hear testimony that there certainly is room and I guess hope for growth, yes.
Okay, so based on this project and the project across the street, there could be a significant increase in the facility to the applicant's estimations, is that correct?
Yes, some object, he can't speak to the facility across the street because he's never studied it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I take that back as well. So you also studied during the day, during the weekdays, would that applicable to during construction of this facility?
During construction of the facility, there really wouldn't be any additional traffic.
Well, there would be construction traffic, and that, I'm assuming they're not going to build only on Saturday and Sunday.
Yes, it would be considered temporary, but there would, I guess there would be some additional traffic with respect to construction, but it would be on a temporary basis.
And we don't know how long that construction is going to be because they haven't laid out a construction schedule yet, is that correct, Mr. Convery?
Was that a question you wanted to make?
That was directed to you, we do not know how long that construction period is going to be because you have not done a construction schedule yet, is that correct?
We need to know if one required this time, but no, we have not done one.
That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Just want to remind the public, questions are limited to, and it is questions, not statements, limited to information presented in the traffic report. I'm going to end up from Johnny Tenbrook, I want you to use something like your name, spell your last name and your address, please. Okay, go ahead.
Sure, my name is Johnny Tenbrook, my last name is two words, first word is a lowercase T E N, like the number 10, the second word, double hyphen, is B R O E K E, and address is 2346 Amaro Road.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something with Mr. Lucio, were you using the, you were using the data of travel, that other houses of worship, the synagogues, the churches, and the mosques as comparable facilities with comparable use to do, to predict, right? To use that data to predict the impact that the proposed building would have, right? So it wasn't, you know, we weren't comparing Apple for all, but we're doing a predictive analysis, is that correct?
Yes, I looked at the other three houses of worship to get an idea of what the peak hour of those facilities were, and compared it against the 50 vehicles that were used in the peak hours with this study.
And that's usually what's done for this kind of study, right? You don't have, you can't see into the future and see what the impact of one thing is going to be, so you look at things that are similar and then you try and draw a predictive conclusion.
Yes.
Okay, so then, my other question is, when it comes to this, you were talking about sort of grading different levels of traffic congestion or different levels of sort of problematic issues related to traffic, I know there was like an E and an F and things like that, I couldn't write it down fast enough.
Yeah, the levels of service range from level service A as in apple to level service F as in frank, and so as you go down, in New Jersey, we really don't see any level service of A, B, or C, we're really dealing with level service D, E, and F, and so E is acceptable and F obviously is failing, but in many cases, we have level service F.
Okay, so my next question is, my question's based on that, which is, in addition to sort of nuisance things like congestion and things like that, do you see a correlation as we go down on the quality of that list with things like accidents, injury, possibly fatalities, damage to properties, so if we actually go down on that list on South Middle Bush Road, can we actually expect, you know, an interproportional rise in things like accidents and possibly injuries to destruction of property?
I would say no, I would say that as, you know, there's more and more congestion, speed of the vehicles are lower, generally speaking, there would be, there would not be an increase in crashes as a result, there would be an increase in congestion and more travel time associated with traveling along Middle Bush Road, but not from a, not from a crash standpoint.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, next. Mr. Chairman, I do not see anybody else with their hand raised. Hey, does anybody have any other further questions? Second witness, are they available, let's put it that way. It's only nine o'clock.
See, Karen, if I may, we don't have another witness this evening, partly because we have anticipated having less time this evening, we did communicate to Mr. Reagan a couple of days ago that we planned only on presenting Mr. Lucio this evening, but as Ms. Carrick indicated, we'll be presenting two additional witnesses at the next hearing, an environmental expert and our planner.
May I inquire as to whether we will be getting any reports from either of them prior to the next meeting?
Yes, yes, we will be providing an environmental report, I expect to be able to do that early next week, and at this point, we're not planning on submitting a report from our planner, but if anything additional is submitted, it will be as far in advance as the next hearing as possible.
Okay, so my understanding, then, there's no further questions this evening, say you have one.
We do not have an additional witness this evening.
Okay, then I guess we need to...
Okay, at this time, I move Dada Bagwan to carry it, after that, we will make that decision. So what I will do, for those of you listening, if you give me a moment, Mr. Thomas, do I, do I have your okay to bring that screen up so that I can share it, or is there something else you want to discuss before I do so?
Fine, bring the screen up.
Okay, as stated in right now, this Dada Bagwan hearing is going carried to August 5th at 7:30 p.m., we will still be doing virtual meetings at that time, for those of you wishing to participate in this virtual WebEx meeting, event address for attendees will be posted on the township website at https://www.franklintnj.org/home components/calendar/events/17629/2193. For those of you wishing to listen via telephone, the call-in number is 1-408-418-9388 and the access code is 1730430644. For anybody wishing any further information on this, please contact me at the Franklin Township Minister, my phone number is 732500 and my extension is 6...
Mr. Chairman, if anything further, anybody have questions?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, you may need an extension of time, so I am going to grant an extension of time through August 31st for the board to act in this matter. If counsel wants it in writing, I'll provide a letter if he thinks it's necessary.
That's fine, Mr. Anthony, thank you. Other items? Okay, I want to again wish Bruce good luck in the future, stay and stay safe, and if that's what adjourned... Welcome to Franklin, Mr. Reagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, everyone have a nice weekend.